Get started with the agenda portion of the meeting. We've got ordinance on second reading. One, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, Title 15 Buildings and Construction, at Chapter 15, dot 70, vacant property registration ordinance. Two, an ordinance to approve a long-term tax exemption and financial agreement with the Hoffman Housing and Urban Renewal Associates, LLC. We have done on first reading, correct? No, not yet, okay. All right, on first reading, an ordinance, uh, one, in order to adopt the redevelopment plans for the fair and redevelopment plan area in the city of New Brunswick. Two, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, and Traffic, Chapter 10, dot 16, Stopping and Standing or Parking, Section 10, dot 16, dot 20, Schedule 24, No Parking at Any Time, College Avenue. Three, an ordinance to exceed municipal budget appropriation limits, establish a cap, cap bank. Four, bond ordinance, providing for the 2017 capital improvement program by and in the city of New Brunswick and the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriated in $4,347,250. Therefore, an authorizing of debt in the amount of $4,140,000, requiring a down payment of $207,250, uh, two, seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Five, bond ordinance, providing for the various improvements to the water system by and in the city of New Brunswick and the, in the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriating $4,344,000. Therefore, an authorizing the issuance of four, four, four million, three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, bonds or notes to the finance of the cost thereof. Six, bond ordinance, providing for the various capital improvements to the sewer system by and in the city of New Brunswick and the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriating $1,500,000. Therefore, an authorizing the issuances of $1,500,000 bonds or notes to the finance that the cost thereof. And we have resolutions. Number one, approve agenda amendments. Two, approve payrolls. Eight, uh, what's that, March 4th, uh, 2017, till March 4th, 2017, then from 3:18, 17 to 3:31, 17. Three, authorize refund for redeemed tax sales certificates. Four, approve request for the use of city property requested by the city, New Brunswick Cultural Center, for the third annual Hub City Sounds Caribbean Latino Festival. Location, Joyce Comer Park, date Sunday, September 17, 2017, time, 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Five, approve request for the use of city property requested by the New Brunswick Cultural Center for the second annual Hub City Sounds Caribbean Festival. Location, Boyd Park and Amphitheater, date Saturday, August 26, 2017, time, 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Six, approve request for the use of city property, uh, yeah, approve request for the use of city property requested by the New Brunswick Cultural Center for the second annual Hub City Sounds Indo-American Festival. Location, Boyd Park and Amphitheater, date Saturday, August 12, 2017, time, 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM, police extra duty. Seven, approve request for street, uh, for the use of city property and street closing, requested by the New Brunswick Cultural Center for the Hub City, Hub City Sounds Festival. Done. Thank you. Celebrate traditions of the people of Oaxaca.
Oaxaca.
Mexico. Location, Boyd Park and Amphitheater, date Sunday, July 23, 2017, time, 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM, street closure. Street closure time, 10:00 AM to 10, 10, 10:00 AM to 10:30 AM, street closure, begin at Walgreens on Jersey Avenue to Handy Street, uh, to, to Handy Street to French Street to Sedan Street to Railroad Avenue, to New Street to Boyd Park, police extra duty. Eight, approve amendment of the resolution, R dash 021-785, reason to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $3,136,050 to Benedict and Altman for Police Director Anthony Caputo in a matter of Arthur Anderson et al. versus Anthony Caputo from $25,976 to $29,112. Nine, approve shared services agreements with the New Brunswick Board of Education for the 2017, 2018 school year, for reimbursement for school safety, uh, program, after-school program and garage, uh, garbage pickup, uh, park use and maintenance, amount of $3,707, yeah, $3,793,445. Ten, approve emergency temporary appropriations. Eleven, approve amendment of resolution, R dash 031-777, change order number seven, with Joe May Contracting, uh, Contracting Corporation. For 2015 sanitary sewer improvements project, Phase 2, A, specification number 89515A, amount $26,888. Approval of this change order will constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. Twelve, approve amendment and resolution of R dash 041-711, change order number eight, with Joe May Contracting Corporation for 2015 sanitary sewer improvements project, Phase 2A, specification number 89515A, amount of $45,017.32. Approval of this change will constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. Thirteen, approve amendment of resolution, 0 dash 41-712, change order number nine, with Joe May Contracting Corporation for 2015 sanitary sewer improvements project, Phase 2A, specification number 89515A, amount $6,727.40. Approval of this change order will constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original Fourteen, approve request for the use of city property, street closing, requested by the New Brunswick Cultural Center, a single demand celebration and parade, park location, Joyce Comer Park, street closing. Street closing, Library on Livingston Avenue to Joyce Comer Avenue, on Joyce Comer Avenue, date Saturday, May 6, 2017, time, street closing, 10:00 AM to 10:30 AM, time, park, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, police extra duty. Fifteen, approve request for city property and sidewalk request, requested by the New Brunswick Cultural Center for Buster Day, which is part of the Hub City Music Festival. Location, Monument Park and sidewalks in front of several stores and restaurants, date Saturday, April 15, 2017, park usage from 4:30 PM to 5:30 PM, and sidewalk usage from 1:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Date, Saturday, April 22, 2017, park usage from 6:30 PM to 7:30 PM, and sidewalk usage from 1:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Sixteen, approve amendment for resolution, R dash 031-715, reason to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $8,126 to Benedict and Altman for Police Director Anthony Caputo in the matter of Steve Middleton et al., city of New Brunswick, from $30,940, $924 to $39,050. Seventeen, approve request for parking vehicles in the Bugle Park, requested by Francis E. Parker Memorial Home, for employee parking in Bugle Park for twenty, uh, for two events being held in 2000, 2017 at the Eastern Avenue facility, location Bugle Park, uh, date Sundays, uh, June 4, 2017, 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and Wednesday, December 6, 2017, from 2:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Number of parking spaces, 40. Eighteen, request for use of city property requested by the Supersonics Track Club for New Jersey AAU High School District Championship Event for Track and Field, location Memorial Stadium Track and Field, dates, Sunday, April 9, 2017, Saturday, April 15, 2017, Sunday, June 18, 2017, time, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Nineteen, approve request for street closing, requested by Rutgers State University for Rutgers Day, location College Avenue between Hamilton Street and Senior Street and Seminary Place, date Saturday, April 29, 2017, time, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, time, Rutgers Day Parade, time, 9:30 AM to 12:15 PM, police extra duty. Twenty, authorize the purchase by Police Department under state contract, A dash 83909 dash slash T dash 0109, radio communication equipment and accessories from Motorola Solutions Incorporated for one mobile radio and accessories, not to exceed $3,230.30. Twenty-one, approve amendment of resolution, R dash 101-629, reason to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $1,150.47 to Christopher D. Adams Esquire of Adams, Adams Buckin Palo LLC for representation of Thomas Loughlin, city administrator, in the matter of Arthur Anderson et al. versus the city of New Brunswick on punitive damage claims from $7,500 to $8,650.47. Twenty-two, approve ABC liquor license renewal, 2016 and 2017, for New Brunswick Specialty Food LLC liquor license, number 12, that, 1214, 33066012. Twenty-three, approve off-premise raffle merchandise at 75 Morris Street for the Our Lady of Mount Carmel Church, uh, date June 24, 2017. Twenty-four, approve request for the use of city property, requested by Lisa McFaul for graduation party, location Bugle Park Pavilion, date Monday, June 19, time, 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Twenty-five, approve release of site performance bond in amount of $525,000, three, $525,300 to Johnson &amp; Johnson Headquarters, for Johnson &amp; Johnson Headquarters, 501 George Street, Block 34, Lot Number 1. Twenty-six, approve release of the site inspection fees in amount of $1,048,636 to 205 Eastern Realty LLC for 200, 205 Eastern Avenue, Block 82, Lot 6 dash 02. Approve, uh, 27, approve release of site inspection fees, in amount of $1,625 to Devco for New Brunswick Theological Seminary, Block 94, Lot, that's 1 dot 01 and 5 dot 01. Twenty-eight, authorize the purchase by Police Department under state contract, A dash 89980 slash M 0483, National Value Point Computer from Wireless Communications Incorporated, doing business as Wireless Communications and Electronics for installation services, not to exceed $6,828.88. Twenty-nine, approve limit of resolution, R dash 021-772, reason to pay the additional legal fees in the amount of $20,475 to Arleo and Donahue LLC for representation of Mayor James Cahill in the matter of Steve Middleton versus the city of New Brunswick et al. and Arthur Anderson et al. versus the city of New Brunswick et al. on punitive damage claims from $84,600, $600 to $113,075. Thirty, approve of limit of resolution, reason to pay outstanding invoices, invoices, and the $13,000, uh, $13,013 for water utility, with Guard State Laboratories Incorporated, specification of 512, 16RFP, thirteen, uh, not to exceed $13,000, uh, $13,013. All right. Thirty-one, approve request, approve purchase by Police Department under state contract, A dash 899M dash 0483, National Value Point Computer from Wireless Electronics, doing business as Wireless Communications and Electronics, for two arbitrator, uh, arbitrated 360 HD and accessories, not to exceed $14,180.82. Thirty-two, approve professional service agreement, uh, to Delaware Raritan Engineering Incorporated for 2017 conflict engineering for review of site plans and subdivisions, engineering review, fair, uh, review, term, uh, January 1st, 2017 to December 31st, 2017, fair and open, non-premature. Thirty-three, award professional service agreement, Big Enough Planning Consultants Incorporated for 2017 review of site plans and subdivisions, planning review, term, January 1st, 2017 to December 31st, 2017, fair and open, non-premature. Thirty-four, award professional service agreement to McManus Scotland Valman for 2017 conflict attorney for planning board and board of adjustments, term, January 1st, 2017 to December 31st, 2017, fair and open, non-premature. Thirty-five, approve purchase by Police Department under state contract, license and related services for She, S H I, international corporation, um, for, for software and Police Department, not to exceed $3,702. Thirty-six, approve awarded contract with absolute fire protection for fire engine pump repair services, term, 12 months commencing, uh, April 21st, 2017, and ending April 20th, 2018, specification number 58817P, not to exceed $25,000. Thirty-seven, approve amendment of resolution, R dash 051-672, reason to pay the additional $600 to Central Poly Corporation by the Fire Department for furnish and deliver janitorial supplies, with Central Poly Corporation, specification number 508, that's 16P, not to exceed $600. Approve of this con, approve of this change will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. Thirty-eight, approve authorization rebid requested by the Police Department for in-service training for law enforcement officers, rebid, specification number 59017RFP. Thirty-nine, approve award contract with Allied Oil Corporation LLC for furnish and deliver diesel fuel for the Department of Public Works, term, 12 months, 12-month period commencing April 6, 2017, and ending April 5, 2018, specification number 58617P, not to exceed $70,000. Forty, request for use of city property requested by the New Brunswick Cultural City, Cultural Center for Hub City Sounds Rock, New Brunswick Punk Festival, location Boyd Park Amphitheater, uh, date Sunday, September, uh, September 10, 2017, time, 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM, police extra duty. Forty-one, approve resolution to authorize refund of escrow to 19 US Highway 1 LLC, in amount of $295,66. Forty-two, approve resolution to authorize refund of escrow to New Brunswick Development Corporation for New Jersey Books Product, amount $602.46. Forty-three, approve award of contract, Rogers Group LLC, Police Department accreditation, policy, maintenance and compliance, term, 12-month period commencing March 1st, 2017, and ending February 28, 2018, and thereof, for an additional 12 months that, that, that should they so desire, specification number 59117RFP, not to exceed $5,500, fair and open, non-premature. Forty-four, authorize the lease of a copy machine for the Fire Department, Rico USA Incorporated for one Rico model C, number C250, 3G colored digital copy system, not to exceed $2076 per month, beginning June 1st, 2017, and ending May 31st, 2021, 48-month contract, state contract number 4047 slash G2075 copiers, maintenance and supplies. Forty-five, approve relaxation of noise ordinance requested by Public Services Electric and Gas Company, PSCNG, reason to expedite the completion of their gas modernization program, Phase 2 for New Brunswick, date Saturday, uh, Saturdays from April 8, 2017 through October 31st, 2017, excluding holidays, time, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Forty-six, approve the release of performance guarantee to Environmental Maintenance Company for the beginning, for the opening permit to number 131334, amount of $9,730.67. Uh, forty-seven, approve request for solicitation of funds requested by Rutgers Habitat for Humanity for Habitat for Humanity House sponsorship, a barrier-free home in Greater Plainfield, dates April 14, 15, 16, 21st, 22nd, 23rd, 2017, time, 12:00 PM to 6, uh, 6:00 PM. Location, Rogers Lane and Dudley Road, Mercer Avenue and George Street. Forty-eight, approve release of site performance bond, number 105, uh, 782322 to $455,160. Number 105, 78221 to $273,000, and 105, 782317 to $250,500 on site and site inspection fees to Robert Wood Johnson Hospital for 25 French Street, 150 Somerset Street, Block Number 24 dash 01, lots 1 dash 01, that's 70, dash, a dot, 01. Forty-nine, approve resolution, R dash 031, reason for change and certification of funds for the amount of, amount, for the account number, 2 dash 528 to $40,000, $40,000 for act, uh, certification of funds for the Fire Department, for $5,000 for temperature and control HVAC maintenance and repairs, with air systems maintenance, specification number 58117P, not to exceed $47,500. Approval of this change will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. Fifty, approve amendment of resolution, reason additional date to approve relaxation of the city noise ordinance and street closure requested by Equicane Rentals, reason to place a crane at 171 Somerset Street to remove the existing rooftop and steel from the roof of Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital, date Saturday, April 8, 2017, alternate dates, April 15, 22nd, 29th, 2017, time, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Fifty-one, approve amendment of resolution, R dash 021-75, reason to pay 2016 invoice, invoices with Equicorn Water Technologies LLC for the maintenance and support of MemCor membrane filtration system, specification number 49916RFP. Fifty-two, city of New Brunswick municipal budget introduction, Wednesday, April 5th, public hearing, May 3rd, 2017. Fifty-three, resolution requesting the Director of Division of Local Government Services in the Department of Community Affairs to provide written consent to allow the city, to allow the city of New Brunswick to compute the reserve for uncollected taxes pursuant to the revision of NJSA 48, or, that's 41C254, authorize tax, tax collector to transfer overpayments on several tax and utility counts. Fifty-five, advising the Senate Housing Board, reappointments, name Caesar Vando, expires April 3, 2022, and Anthony Drew Janik Jr., expires April 3, 2022. We have items for discussion by council, uh, which is the city of New Brunswick Digital Residential Parking Program. Is that it? All right, the meeting will now come to order.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Egan.
Here.
Councilmember Escobar.
Here.
Councilmember Sakura Ludwig.
Here.
Council President Fleming.
Here. Please be advised that the notice of requirements of open public meeting that has been applied and satisfied at the annual notice, which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick, has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed at the appropriate public board in the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official paper of the city of New Brunswick, namely, the home news. Can we all please stand for the flag of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the gospel of liberty and justice.
Would you remain standing to a moment of silence for those that defend freedom around the world, and those that continue to defend freedom, and those that lost their lives this week in battle, and especially the innocent lives that have been lost all across the Entertain a motion with minutes.
Yeah. And motion for seven minutes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Egan.
Yeah.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Sakura Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Fleming.
Yes. All right, if we don't have any public hearings, we will go to the ordinance on second reading. Number one, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 15 Buildings and Construction, Chapter 15, dot 70, vacant property registration ordinance. Anybody from the public would like to speak on this, mind if you have five minutes, please come to the microphone, state your name and address.
Good evening, members of the council, it's good to see you. My name is Charles Cradaville, I'm from New Brunswick, I'm the editor of New Brunswick Today, as you know, the community newspaper. I have, uh, several questions about this. First, could, uh, Mr. Council President, could you tell me what your understanding of this ordinance is, and what...
Look, Mr. Chairman, these...
The, uh, this, this ordinance is a vacant property registration ordinance. This is the second part of the ordinance we adopted earlier in the year called the abandoned properties rehabilitation ordinance. And this ordinance will work hand in hand with the first ordinance that we adopted, you know, here in the city, which requires anyone who owns a vacant property, uh, whether it be residential or commercial, to register within the city of New Brunswick Division of Inspections. And then, that particular registration will require certain information about who owns the property and is responsible to maintain it. Uh, the ordinance also has requirements, uh, in there with respect to, uh, care and upkeep of the property, if there's a problem at the property, uh, who can be contacted, a posting requirement with respect to who owns the property, should there be anyone from the public who wants to know who owns this particular vacant property. Uh, there is a, uh, registration, uh, fee which involved with, uh, the registration ordinance as well.
Thank you. It's an overview. Is the council aware of the fees? How expensive they are? And, uh, I mean, listen, I, I, I get the motivation, I don't like having, uh, you know, vacant properties around, but, uh, do you, do you think that this, this fee schedule is reasonable? And so, can you explain to me how, uh, what, what the fee schedule means when it says renewal? Is this an annual fee?
The initial registration fee is $1,000. If the property remains in the vacant condition for a 12-month period from the initial registration, there is a renewal fee that's required, which goes to $2,000. Um, if, unfortunately, if there would be a situation where we go into the third year for a second renewal, um, the registration fee is $3,000, and then it stays at $3,000 for a subsequent, uh, renewal, 12-month renewal. I couldn't add that I actually looked at a lot of different ordinances throughout the state. Um, some ordinances adopted in other municipalities are much higher with respect to the fees. Um, I think our proposed ordinance is probably in the middle of the road.
Can you tell me, has the city budgeted about how much it expects to bring in per year as a result of this?
It has not, no.
Is there an estimate of how many properties would be eligible for this, uh, fee in the city?
I can't give an exact number, but, um, I have heard we probably have several dozen.
Definitely several dozen. Can you tell me, uh, there's a requirement to maintain liability insurance, and, uh, the amount seems somewhat high, that you would expect somebody to get $300,000 worth of coverage. Some of these abandoned properties might not even be worth $300,000, right? Why, why are you requiring, uh, the owners to get that, uh, that much insurance?
The whole idea of the insurance requirement, uh, is to ensure the protection of the health, welfare, and safety of the general public. Uh, should someone get hurt on one of these properties that we did, uh, the city wants to make sure there's insurance coverage that would apply to protect those who may be hurt, uh, whether it be personal injury or property damage to adjoining property, neighboring property as a result of a fire, et cetera. The, uh, standard homeowners insurance, I would imagine, people have probably at least $500,000 on single residents. There is the, uh, $1,000,000 for multifamily and commercial structures, which I don't think is unreasonable either.
There's a reference to a municipal officer here. Who, who is that person? The municipal officer to issue regulations?
That person hasn't been hired yet.
And, uh, is the city advertising that job opening? When will the city hire this person?
The mayor is interviewing potential candidates, um, as we speak. But I don't, I don't know exactly the date that the offer, the personal adjournments.
Okay, and when will this new registration requirement go into effect?
Well, if the ordinance is adopted this evening, um, it goes into effect after publication, and it's not in execution by the mayor, but as far as the requirement for registration, um, June 1st is the trigger date in that regard.
And, uh, can you tell me whose idea was this?
Well, I, if I could answer that, um, I, I personally, from a law department perspective, have seen many other municipalities who have enacted this type of ordinance, as well as the prior one on the abandoned properties, state statute allows for it. And, and in light of the enabling legislation that the state has handed down, it's a tool that municipalities can use to get a handle on their vacant and abandoned properties, so that certain neighborhoods don't become, um, eyesores as a result of these particular properties, the whole property owners accountable, whether it be lending institutions who actually own these properties by virtue or foreclosures, or whether it's just a neglectful property owner. So, uh, this benefits everybody, whether it be, um, the city as a whole to maintain property values, to ensure safety of the public, as well as, uh, the residents who live in a particular neighborhood that unfortunately have an abandoned property.
So, I take it you counsel... So, I take it to council, would you?
Yes.
For your background, I'll, Mr. Cradaville, don't worry. The idea for bringing this forward came from a number of community groups. Uh, the Esperanza, uh, Village Neighborhood has been promoting this, as has Unity Square. The Housing Community Development Network of New Jersey has come to the city and asked us to, uh, adopt this, as they have, uh, pushed ordinances like this in, in many towns, uh, around the state, uh, New Jersey Future also. Uh, as I was explaining to Mr. Cradaville before the meeting, uh, this is an ordinance that's been adopted in, uh, a number of municipalities around the state, particularly in the, uh, Essex County, Hudson County area. Uh, they have it in, in Irvington, East Orange, Montclair, Bloomfield, uh, places like that. It's a relatively common ordinance, and it's essentially to go after a lot of the foreclosed properties that are bank-owned, and that are, uh, they, they don't even have absentee landlords, and this is a way to try to get those properties maintained, so they don't deteriorate in the rest of the neighborhood and harm, uh, the other people who are living in that neighborhood.
Thanks, thanks, Mr. Patterson, for the explanation. I, uh, um, you know, like I said, I see where you're coming from, it's a, it's an idea that I agree with in principle, I'm just a little concerned about the, uh, fee structure and the, uh, penalties. I wanted to make sure that the city council is aware of the, uh, penalties, uh, which in some cases can be, uh, up to twenty-five hundred dollars per day. Okay, I'm just, I'm surprised that the city hasn't budgeted for, for this, uh, uh, you know, what is sure to be a windfall. Um, and I, uh, just think maybe, maybe it's worth looking at those numbers again, maybe comparing to some other towns and seeing which towns have had the most successful, uh, programs. And it also might be something that, you know, I, if we're gonna hire somebody to be the point person for this, maybe it makes sense to hire them first before you, uh, codify all this. Um, you know, it might be good to get their opinion. Uh, so I, I would, uh, ask you to think twice before passing this right now. Thank you.
Yes, name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm, my name is Eric Mirberg, I live over in Ward five. Um, forgive my ignorance on this, but so, uh, this, is this the first time that the City of New Brunswick is going to start fining landlords or owners of property for vacant structures in the city? Or is there, or is this at least an increase in the fines that go towards, uh, property owners?
If, Mr. Council President, members of council, if I could, uh, this is a, uh, registration ordinance requirement. This is something new, we've never required vacant properties, uh, owners of properties to register their particular properties. However, uh, for many, many years, as long as I've been around, the Division of Inspections issues summonses against property owners who don't care for their properties, who don't maintain their properties, who allow their properties to become, uh, into a state of disrepair. So, uh, that's already on the books, but this will give us an ability to monitor these particular properties, to ensure we know who does control them, and to hopefully, um, have them rehabilitated under the second ordinance I mentioned before, under the Abandoned Property Statute, or have them brought back into repair.
Okay, so I just wanted to establish that the one thousand dollars for one year, two thousand dollars for two years, three thousand dollars for three years going on, or that is a new fine to go into municipal coffers from vacant properties, correct?
New registration fee.
Oh, okay. Registration fee. Um, so I know that there's no estimated, uh, value, uh, at this point, or, sorry, uh, estimated amount of revenue that this will generate the city yet, but is there, I'm curious to know if there's anything, uh, if there's been any talks as to where this extra generated revenue is going to be going?
Well, yeah, the ordinance actually provides specifically for it. You look right under the section fifteen seventy point oh eight O B, it reads specifically, "At least eighty percent of all income resulting from the application of this ordinance shall be used for the sole purpose of carrying out municipal activities with respect to vacant and distressed properties." And then it goes on, including, but I limited code enforcement, abatement of nuisance, stabilization, rehabilitation, and other activities to minimize blight and further product, uh, productive reuse of property. So this, this is all designed to eliminate this particular condition. The money is provided in order to be directed to that cause.
Um, okay, that's, that's good, so it's going toward, sorry, I didn't get a chance to, or, or answer beforehand. Um, so it's going towards maintenance of these abandoned properties and safety, you know, public safety outreach for that. I would just like to, uh, what about the other, so the other twenty percent, uh, I would, if it's not allotted for, I would just like to maybe make the suggestion that maybe go towards homeless outreach, or, you know, and try and benefit the homeless community in New Brunswick, because these are vacant properties that could be used for shelter in times of inclement weather, um, as a, a safe base for people who don't have shelter. So I would just like to recommend to the council that at least the other twenty percent, or any other money, uh, any other of that eighty percent of fines that are generated, be used towards supporting our, uh, supporting our homeless population. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak on this? You have five minutes, and please state your name and address for the record.
I'm John Carlo DiLionardo, I'm, uh, an employee at New Jersey Community Capital, one oh eight Church Street. Um, New Jersey Community Capital is one of the organizations that's been working with the city over the last couple of years to do some of these abandoned property and vacant property registration, um, ordinances, and the kind of the background behind it. Um, this is something that, as, uh, Glenn mentioned earlier, numerous cities around the state have done. Um, dozen, dozens of cities, um, it's a truly preventative measure to help you, um, and other property owners protect their property and the value of their property, to, uh, prevent blight, it's, it's more of a deterrent than anything else. Um, you know, there are numerous organizations, uh, here in the city that have worked on this. There's a Healthy Housing Collaborative that meets, uh, New Brunswick Tomorrow, the Esperanza Group, uh, Unity Square, um, even some of the groups here in New York City that do work with the homeless population, um, who have been kind of helping, um, you know, support this, uh, at the administration level. Um, so we're happy to, uh, support this, we, we're looking forward to seeing, uh, this, you know, further a lot of New Brunswick's goals, a lot of the goals that you guys have as a council, um, and, you know, we, we stand to help continue supporting, uh, from our perspective. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening, my name is Jeff Crumb, I'm, uh, resident of the City of New Brunswick, seventy Jefferson Avenue. I also work with Giancarlo at New Jersey Community Capital. Uh, just wanted to come here very quickly and, uh, express our gratitude for the council for considering this ordinance. New Jersey Community Capital works with nearly a dozen municipalities across the state to help enact ordinances like this, and these ordinances really do benefit the community. These, uh, if you could imagine living next to a vacant property that sits vacant, that could potentially be sourced for squatters, uh, for, uh, other nuisances, it's, it's not a good place to live. And this, this ordinance will really help New Brunswick, as well as it's helped numerous communities across the state deal with the foreclosure crisis that still continues to impact our state today. Uh, and so I just, uh, here on behalf of New Jersey Community Capital, as well as a number of other community organizations and residents behind them, um, who really support this initiative, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak on the ordinance? Name and address for the record, please.
Teresa Vivan, New Brunswick resident for two thousand twenty years. Um, I want to say thank you for these resolutions, I know I've been waiting for so long, and I think also have to considerate the, the suggestion of Charlie of hiring somebody to coordinate all these efforts, because I'm here, different groups are working towards these, these, uh, empty lots, and of course, I agree with all of you that need, uh, uh, that has been taking, uh, different steps in order to, to fix the situation on abandoned properties, but also I think many organizations like Lasts American Need, I know they're nonprofit, that with lack of, those offices, we also want to be part of this initiative, and we raise funds to, to get access to an empty property or abandoned property, but without having a contact person is making it difficult, you know, and, and I think, uh, years are gonna pass before we can have access to these spaces, so I think having somebody that is gonna coordinate this initiative is gonna be better for us to start planning. I hear also a lot of developments are here in New Brunswick. Uh, I ask, again, if this community input into what is gonna happen, or what part of the community, uh, space is gonna be given to us in this property that has been building, new buildings, inclusive, I suppose that as a new, um, uh, building is, 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 is in a, eh, we have in New Brunswick, it's supposed to have community access to, like, you know, affordable housing, but we don't know how to promote this, or how the community people is gonna be, uh, or where to go to have access to this, this affordable housing. So I think that's something that maybe you can help us understand, how we can reach somebody to help us.
You said how, you said, how do we promote for?
Who is in charge of the community part for new developments?
Mr. Fleming, I think, uh, Mr. Mockland indicated we are in the process of identifying individual who will be the, uh, official, uh, city official who will run this particular program, the rehabilitation program and the registration program, and I'm sure that individual will have access, uh, to the public and be able to, uh, be a liaison to the public regarding these properties.
What about the new buildings?
The new building?
Yeah, I mean, these are hotels, new, you know, new, new places, uh, with, uh, as opposed to part of those new buildings is supposed to help, uh, provide affordable homes, right? It's not part of the agreement with the city?
It depends on the funding stream, it's, it's where they get the funding, and they usually, the developer is in charge of, of that project. Uh, is it, it's getting taxed, taxed, abatement, abatement, they're getting money from the state to be able to construct, uh, and to build it, then they're the ones, the developer is the one, it's not the city, it's a developer that has a certain amount of units, right, that they have to provide based on the funding sources that they can, is required. State usually requires, it depends on where they get it, eh, so it's, it's, it's on a, it depends on the project that is being built.
So then, just for the record, I want, I want you to suggest, or let us make a suggestion so the city council would consider that who is the developer that is gonna take, you know, these initiatives in New Brunswick, since we are lacking affordable homes? You know, that the, the, the situation is terrible, so I just want to make sure that this is part of it, and also that the community is aware of where to go to have access to these places, because we don't know where to go. Um, and as new places are, are created, I think, uh, or new developers are taking on these empty lots in New Brunswick, making new buildings, I think community input is necessary, and we don't have access to those meetings, and I think this has to be part of the, what they, maybe in the, in the city page should be promoted, so we can attend, make suggestions, since we need many of the resources in New Brunswick for developing community. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak on this ordinance? Seeing none, move your ordinance.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Council Member Egan.
Yes.
Council Member Escobar.
Yes.
Council Member Sakura Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Fleming.
Yes. All right, uh, two, okay, next one. Uh, number two, we have an ordinance to approve a long-term tax exemption and financial agreement with the Hoffman Housing Urban Renewal Associates LLC. Anybody from the public like to speak on this, please give your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradaville. Uh, first question, is it true that the land in question here is not currently taxed?
The land is, um, taken away by the federal government, it's the, um, old Hoffman building site on, on Nielsen Street.
So.
Okay.
It's tax exempt currently. Okay, so then, why is there a need for a thirty-year tax abatement if the property is not, uh, paying property taxes currently?
Surprised at Mr. Cradaville's question, because I, I think he knows that most of the tax on a property goes to the improvements, not just the land. We're gonna build a sixty-six unit, uh, building here, which is affordable housing for, uh, seniors, uh, fifty-five years and older. Uh, some of the units are set aside for homeless persons, there'll be vouchers, uh, with the units, uh, some of the units, uh, also, to, uh, allow people to have, uh, some very affordable rents, which we just heard a number of, uh, of comments about. And the purpose of the tax abatement is to lower the operational costs of the, uh, project, so they can maintain those lower rents. They're also seeking low-income housing tax credit funding from New Jersey Housing Mortgage Finance Agency. This is an extremely competitive, uh, funding source for the project, and you get a point for having a, um, a, a tax abatement at the level that we're setting it here. And unless you pretty much get a perfect score on these applications, you're not gonna get funded. We've tried this several times before, as Mr. Cradaville and I discussed at the Plenary Board Hearing about this, uh, this project. It's very competitive funding, that's why we're providing it, so we can provide more affordable housing here in the City of New Brunswick.
And I do wanna thank Mr. Patterson for, uh, answering a lot of my questions at the zoning board meeting there. Um, but I, it, what I'm trying to get at here is, who's gonna own the land? Is this housing authority going to sell the land to Penrose, and therefore Penrose will now have to pay taxes, so you're gonna give them the tax abatement, or, I, I, I don't get it?
Ground leased developer, the developer owns the building, developer pays, uh, payment in lieu of taxes on the improvements on the property.
Okay, um, next question, is there a representative for the developer here?
No.
Is there a representative for the housing authority here? Okay, uh, it's my understanding that the housing authority is intimately involved in this building, not just by owning the land where it's going to be, but they will also be in charge of filling the, uh, I believe seventy-five percent of the units there. Is that correct, that the housing authority is gonna be relied upon to use their public housing waiting list?
Some of the units are funded through a subsidy source through the annual contribution contract, and, uh, those units, uh, the, the residents for that will be selected off of the housing authority waiting list.
And why can't the housing authority, uh, do this themselves? Why do they need Penrose to build the building for them? Uh, is it the housing authority in the, in the business of providing housing?
It's the housing authority. Why can't they do it?
I, I, I know Charlie knows the answer to, to this one, because we, we've discussed this many times before. This is a, the, the housing authority got approval from HUD to demolish the building, and the process for replacing those units is to do it through private development. That's the way HUD works, they don't go out and build public housing units, uh, anymore. You need to put together a financing package with a number of different, uh, sources of funds. The main one for this project is the low-income housing, uh, tax credit. It is a privately owned development, the housing authority contributes some subsidy money towards, uh, the rent, so they can be lowered. Uh, these other funding sources also contribute towards keeping the, uh, the rents at a, at a low level, so that it's, it's affordable to, to people. Um, this is the way housing is, affordable housing is funded all across the nation.
Thank you for the thorough answer. Can you tell me why Penrose, why was they, why were they selected to be the, uh, developer?
I don't wanna speak for the housing authority, but I believe they did an RFP and selected, uh, Penrose as their designated developer for the Hoffman, uh, replacement project a number of years ago. This is the second phase of that replacement, the first phase was the second phase of Providence Square, where they built a fifty-six unit building over there, which partially replaced the units at Hoffman.
Thank you, and, uh, I wanna say, similar to the last ordinance, this is one where I agree with the, the basic principle, what you try and do, uh, enable affordable housing. Um, I do, just wanna clarify though, it says seniors, it would be for seniors, but it's actually age fifty-five and over, is that, that's correct, right?
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, so while that's a, a laudable goal, I do have some concerns about the housing authority specifically. And if they are gonna be involved in this project, they should have had a representative here. Uh, they also should have had a representative at the zoning board meeting, it did not. They also should have had a meeting in March, but they couldn't have one because, uh, another member has resigned. So, uh, allow me to just lay out my concerns about the housing authority, their recent budget is...
It's not relevant. No, no, we're, we're speaking on this one, you just said you wanted to lay out what your concerns about the housing authority. You can do that during the public.
Right, and, and is the housing authority involved in this project, you're about to get a tax abatement for it for the next three years?
Right now, Mr. Cradaville, you're going off of the topic, you wanna go, you can lay that out, you don't...
You didn't hear what I had to say yet, so.
You can do that during the public.
You just kinda interrupted me right away. Uh, what I was gonna say is that the property manager at the housing authority is currently under investigation by the Agics Board, uh, for failing to disclose her travel expenses, and she's, and she's personally in charge of that waiting list that would be used to fill this building. I wanna make sure that, uh, people get the housing who deserve it, and people who, uh, have waited years on that waiting list, and I don't want it to be mismanaged, and I think the council should share my... And I think the council should share my view that if you're going to go out of your way to give a tax abatement for 30 years to these folks, that you should make sure that it's all done above board. And I would like to point out that I, Penrose was good enough to send a representative to the zoning board meeting and I presented that representative with a copy of this resolution. I have copies for all the board members if I may approach. And so this is a, it says, "Resolution approving and authorizing the amendment of the pre-development loan agreement and demolition funding agreement for Hoffman Pavilion." This is a resolution that was approved in 2012 by the New Brunswick Housing Authority and it says here that they are going to loan Penrose $1.19 million for pre-development expenses on this. But then on page two, it says that they're going to be loaning them $1.9 million. Quite a big difference there. I have requested Penrose to explain how much money they really did borrow and whether or not they paid it back and I have not heard back from Penrose. I have since submitted my questions to the mayor's office. Could you please ask whether Penrose has paid back the $1 million-plus loan that they got from the government that supposedly is in such bad shape they can't afford to do this kind of stuff? Can you tell me, did they pay that loan back?
You're asking questions of the mayor's office.
Well, right now I'm asking you, sir.
No, you said, can we please ask someone at the mayor's office?
I submitted questions via email to the mayor's office. I have not heard back yet. It was recently that I submitted them. But I would like to ask you, before you approve this tax abatement, whether or not Penrose owes the housing authority more than a million bucks?
I don't know the answer to that.
Ask Sam.
I'm not on the same staff.
Okay, well, then you should not approve this tonight. The housing authority is dysfunctional, as I'll get to in the rest of the meeting. They have had four members resign in 19 months and they've struggled to even have meetings. They, I caught them fleecing their tenants and you should not let these people be in charge of this building. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none?
Yes, I want to talk to somebody. That is how you might again, New Brunswick resident. I just want to say today that I, after hearing both the responses, I suggest again the City Council to consider the suggestions from the community members as well because we worry as well as, we're doing research on Latino seniors, why they're lacking of resources, et cetera. But not only Latinos, we find, doing this research, we find all the issues on New Brunswick residents on the senior citizens' age. And I think it's important to know that many of them, they don't have access to affordable housing. So since you guys are planning on giving access to these developers, you have to consider of New Brunswick residents what they need. I heard by working with the senior citizens' research that many of the housing that is for them are for outside New Brunswick residents. The majority are outside New Brunswick residents or immigrant families. So I'm just asking please to take more deeply into what you are proving so you could help us all to understand how we can support the initiatives that you are putting here. I don't think we're against you, I'm just asking you to work with us as well to understand how we can help the residents to improve the lives as well. And thinking about that, imagine that we are a volunteer organization helping the income community, many of us. Many organizations are, have lacking of resources to pay for a housing. We're raising our funds to have access to build a place, a community center where we can work with residents, educate them, et cetera. And it's interesting that you've given a loan of $1 million. I just need $200,000 to start a new community center to help many, many people. And you're giving to these people $1 million and we don't know if they, if they already paid this debt. You know, so I'm just asking you to, please, please, I think it's your ethic or your work as a City Council people to take in consideration how these two decisions are affecting us, I hope, as a thing. Just that, you want to put that out there, I'm worried. I'm just worried and amazed that this is happening and the many needs out there, the community need you guys to pay attention to this, where the money is going, where all this taxes money are going because we need these places for everyone.
Anybody else like to speak on this resolution specifically? Seeing none?
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes.
All right, now we got ordinances on first rule. An ordinance to, an ordinance to adopt a redevelopment plan, a far and deck redevelopment plan area in the city of New Brunswick.
Move the ordinance setting down April 19, 2017 at 6:30 p.m., same date to be advertised.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. Two, an ordinance to amend and supplement revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10 dot 16, Stopping and Standing, or Parking, Section 10 dot 16-020, Schedule 24. No parking at any time, reference to College Avenue.
Move the ordinance setting down April 19, 2017 at 6:30 p.m., same date to be advertised.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. Three, an ordinance to exceed municipal budget appropriation limits and establish a cap bank.
Move the ordinance setting down April 19, 2017 at 6:30 p.m., same date to be advertised.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan? Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. Four, a bond ordinance providing for the general capital improvement program binding in the city of New Brunswick and county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriated $4,347,250. Therefore, an authorization debt in the amount of $4,140,000 and requiring a down payment of $207,250.
Move the ordinance setting down April 19, 2017 at 6:30 p.m., same date to be advertised.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. Five, a bond ordinance providing for the various improvements of the water system binding in the city of New Brunswick and county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriated $4,344,000. Therefore, an authorization issuance of $4,344,000 bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof.
Move the ordinance setting down April 19, 2017 at 6:30 p.m., same date to be advertised.
Council Vice President Egan, Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. Six, a bond order is providing for the various capital improvements source system of buying in the city of New Brunswick and county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriating $1,500,000. Therefore, an authorization issuance of $1,500,000 bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof.
Move the ordinance setting down April 19, 2017 at 6:30 p.m., same date to be advertised.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. Okay, now we have resolutions from number one, 55, I believe, 55? Through 55. Anybody from the public like to come forward and speak on the resolutions? As you remember, if you have five minutes, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, once again Charles Cradaville. Want to draw your attention to number 16, 21, and 29 are all legal fees related to lawsuits where former police officers are suing or, in some cases, current police officers are suing their bosses. Can I get an update on those two cases? Okay. I do think that it's wrong that the police director doesn't come to these meetings and the mayor doesn't come to these meetings and you're paying their legal bills for them. To his credit, Mr. Lockland is at least here, but he's got the lowest bill. So I think that those folks should come to these meetings at least once in a while. Do you want to ask about the liquor license? See, it's a pocket license. Can you tell me the last time it was used, where it was used in the city? 22?
Yeah, 22.
It's the former shop of the Rio liquor license.
Thank you. So I see an amendment to a prior resolution, number 30 here, for outstanding invoices for the water testing. Can I get an update on the lead and copper testing that began last month?
I don't know if that's exactly to do with the facilities in hand, but we're in the process now of, you know, selecting our sites that we're going to be doing and we've come up with the other instructions that we put into. We now have bilingual instructions for the residents to collect the samples and we're just in the process of getting set up to do it. We have until June 30th to get it and we'll be well ahead of that schedule.
7:38, can you tell me why the police are rebidding this?
I believe we did not get sufficient responses to the initial RFP.
Why is it training for, discuss the double situation?
Are by animal trading, are by animal trading, of course correctly, I had to decide. General training, dare to say?
General, general training.
There'll be a specific topic, but we get trained twice, we get animal training for the department twice a year. Thank you. I want to ask about number 42. It's interesting, NJ Books is finally getting refund of escrow. They have since closed up shop and I wanted to ask if the city has any inkling of why they closed up shop? Okay, I'm just concerned because it fits a pattern of, you know, big businesses pushing out smaller businesses in New Brunswick. Obviously NJ Books used to be where, there's now a huge Barnes &amp; Noble. And, you know, they worked out a deal to get them a spot on East River Avenue, but for one reason or another, it didn't work out. And I just wanted to get the council's response to the notion of big businesses pushing out small businesses here in New Brunswick.
I mean, simple gun resolution, I mean, bookstores are closing down in a lot of places because that's not the nature of the business anymore. Those schools are not even buying purses and books anymore. And I think in the next five years, you're not going to have hard copy books. You have most of the books are basically online right now. So that's just the nature of the business right now. We had Barnes &amp; Noble, you know, Brunswick closed down. Nobody really knew that that was close, nobody felt that that was happening.
Is the water in New Brunswick doing well?
Work for Barnes &amp; Noble.
Okay, I mean, that gave them a tax abatement, built a skyscraper there. I'll move on, number 43, the Rogers Group. Can you just tell me what types of accreditation the police are getting done?
It's the same accreditation that we passed in 2013. The Rogers Group just monitors the credit policy and the procedures and whenever there's a state law, attorney general guideline, any other kind of changes in the legislature or rules, they bring the policy and procedures up as the, who are creating the parts.
Okay, so that would be the, with the state association of chiefs of police, that type of accreditation? Or is it... Thank you. Next one, 45, can you just tell me the location of this gas modernization program, Phase 2 through New Brunswick?
It's all over town. A very busy map of where they're trying to replace gas and maybe already done some of that work. Obviously called it Phase 1 over in the Somerset Street area last year, but all over town.
So this ordinance, or this relaxation of the ordinance gives them permission to do the work anywhere in the city during these times?
I don't know, Mr. Rudyard, is that...
There's a very aggressive schedule in order to get this completed. They're putting in from eight-inch to two-inch gas mains throughout the city in order to abandon the cast iron lines that are in, and put in their place plastic lines. They're going to be increasing the pressure within all the gas mains within the city to increase the utilization of the system. And I guess to answer your question, the project, they are giving us bi-weekly schedules of where they're going to be. We are coordinating that. It only began two days ago, so we don't know if they're going to be able to maintain their schedule yet. But they asked for, and this resolution is to give them provision to work on Saturdays. As we are going to have intense weather tomorrow, they're going to lose a day. If they work on Saturday, they'll pick that day back up again. We're trying to maintain the schedules so we're complete through the summer and fall and don't go into the wind of the project.
Will this make it safer, the distribution system?
It will. It is replacing old, an old system that is in the ground. There is no indication that we have gas leaks or a chance of rupture anywhere in the gas system, but to increase the pressure within the gas lines, they are putting in new gas mains.
Thank you very much. Next one, right beneath that, performance guarantee for road opening permit. Can you tell me where this work was done by environmental maintenance company?
54 Avial Street is where the road opening permit was issued.
Thank you. Moving on to number 52, the municipal budget. I have some questions. Could I just get a basic overview of... Yeah, you're introducing a municipal budget today, correct? Okay, can I ask, how much is the budget?
$91.3 million.
Thank you. And does that mean taxes will increase, so how much?
Taxes will increase by 4, 4.9 cents. Just bear in mind, the tax rate has been adjusted because of the rebound. So the tax rate last year was at $2.50. It is now, before the 2017 budget, it is, I think, 94 cents. It'll be about 99 cents as a result of the budget should have been passed.
Okay, and what change does that represent, like a percent increase in taxes?
I would say about 5%.
5% increase, okay. And can you tell me, are there any major items in the budget that are different, you know, for this year than prior years? Major projects or...
Now, we're going to fund, fully fund all of our traditional services and programs. As I said, the rebound curve which has changed the math for, in certain portions of the budget are ratable based with $1.2 billion last year, now $3.3 billion. So the tax rate, of course, adjusted itself. But we are still suffering from the same kinds of things. Our pension bills keep going up, our health costs to our employees and retirees are increasing in 2017 at least at 5%. We are going to accommodate the abandoned property coordinator. The budget assumes a full-time OEM coordinator joining the fire department. We're anticipating five new police hires with potentially three or four retiring this year. That's basically it for now until we get to the hearing, if that's...
Thank you, thank you very much. Just one follow-up question, who's going to be the OEM coordinator?
I don't know.
Okay, is that being advertised? Is the mayor interviewing people?
He's not in the process of interviewing yet.
Okay.
Looking at residents.
Gotcha, okay. And just one last question on the budget. Is there any provision for the police to start making the investments and getting body cameras?
I did not see that in their capital request for the year.
All right, well, that's disappointing. The last item I want to touch on is the final addition here to your amendments, Cesaro Vondo, Anthony Giorgiani. Just to confirm, do either of those gentlemen, you know, live in public housing or get a subsidy for their housing? I don't think so either. And the reason I ask is because Frank Simpson resigned from the board and the board now is in violation of the law because the board is required to have at least one member who lives in the public housing or receives a subsidy. And so while I see Mr. Vondo and Mr. Giorgiani being reappointed for another five-year term, what is the city going to do about that problem of the housing authority being in violation of the law? of the law?
They are, they have, they have been saying...
They fill that slot, and I understand it's to be done as soon as possible. Identify the appropriate individuals, save them time.
So constructive suggestion, it might be a good idea? A constructive suggestion?
No, a suggestion for individual to activate here.
Oh, I, no, I, my suggestion was gonna be that the housing authority advertise it to all of the residents and let them know about this opportunity so that they can apply. Some housing authorities even have an internal election so that the residents can choose their own representative rather than just having Mayor Cahill put someone on who, you know, unfortunately didn't, didn't work out. So I hope that this time, there'll be a more comprehensive process to find the right person for that spot. Thank you.
Hi, Mayor Mel Schumbers, Ward Two. Hi, Council. It's a little low energy tonight because of the heat. We're all kind of melting a little bit, but there's some good things. I'm really happy about, frustrated by all the money that's going into the water utility system. I wasn't here the last time for the resolution, but really stoked about that. I had a question about, um, twenty-one? No, I'm sorry. Thirty-four. About the new conflict attorney for the planning board. I'm sorry, is this a new position or is the person, is a former conflict attorney being workplace? Or is it the same person, new contract?
Okay, thank you.
This is a, or has a, has always had a conflict attorney, and this resolution seeks to confirm that appointment in the event of a conflict between the representation of the full-time attorney, the planning board, or the zoning board, this individual would step in. So there always is a conflict attorney.
Is this a new person?
A new person to the position, correct.
That is a new, that's a former, you're trying to complain?
No, no, the individual's, looks affirmed who we're engaging, but the individual identified as affirmed as individual by the name of Carl Kim, who would be the conflict attorney. And he's been a municipal attorney, planning board attorney, zoning board attorney, other municipalities throughout the state for years, to my knowledge. I can't name them all, but I know he's been very active and does this type of work. So he would serve in that capacity in the event that the regular planning board, the zoning board attorney had a conflict on application.
So he's not the New Brunswick resident?
No, he's a New Brunswick resident.
Okay. My next thing, and this is a big one, and Charlie touched on it. So, uh, the legal fees for Tony Caputo's case. I, it's, every meeting keeps going up. We're at seventy thousand dollars in legal fees just for this week alone that we're up to for Anderson and Middleton separate cases. I am concerned because I understand that, from what I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Caputo is not a union member, and so the city of New Brunswick is not legally obliged to pay his legal fees, correct?
No, the city of New Brunswick is legally obliged to pay his, his legal fees. He's the director, the department head, and these are the payment of fees on punitive damage counts. The city has insurance coverage as well through the municipal joint insurance fund. There are attorneys assigned to handle, the city has a defendant as well. So this is on punitive damage claims only against the individual, which the city, under law, has an obligation to provide this type of defense.
Okay, so is that for all city employees or is that for heads of departmental?
Department heads, depends on the nature of the claim. I couldn't answer all of that except for what type of claim and what capacity that person serves.
For punitive damages?
For punitive damages, right.
Yeah, okay. Um, I, I am just, I'm a little bit concerned because this seventy thousand dollars that's being paid so far just for Tony Caputo, that's a lot of money, and that is enough to buy at least fifty police body cameras. That's including the hardware, software, and cloud storage for all of the data that's collected on the body cameras, which is a lot. And if there is any sort of, I, I haven't found a policy, so I will look into that as to the city's requirement for paying legal fees, but I would, I would suggest, maybe it's a big project, but looking into whether taxpayer money should be going into cases like this, because it's seriously, it's seriously disturbing. I mean, we're paying a hundred, we added another thirty thousand dollars to Mayor Cahill's legal fees for the exact same case. That is an inordinate amount of money, and we're talking about nickels and dimes for small funds, for municipal groups that need money for, what, housing authority fees. Honestly, only need a little bit of money, and we're paying a lot of money for one case. It's, I understand that that's a very complicated thing to ask, but it's, it's just, this body cam thing has been going on for so long, so long, and it's, it's getting rough asking for it again and again. Can you give any more details, I'm sorry if you answered this last, last meeting and I wasn't here, any more details as to where the money for the water utilities goes? Right, this is from first reading stuff.
Say it again?
This is from first reading stuff.
Oh, we don't, it's on first reading?
Yeah.
No, we, that's on second.
Okay, that's fine. Um, I have one more thing. Oh, yeah, so for that body manual training, is there anything that's being thrown around for what the topic might be?
Is there any training, what the topic of the training might be?
As I stated before, we have to decide in time, looking for different educators and make a recommendation.
No, I understand they haven't chosen, but is there something that you're thinking about or something that seems like a pressing issue?
Did you hear?
Sorry.
I'm thinking about a lot of things, but until I make a decision, there's no need to say what I'm thinking about. We just have the training and the data, and we'll make it up.
Okay, well, I would like to respectfully suggest training on police, police participation in collaboration in ice race, which is obviously something we've been talking about for a while now. I understand that you don't participate, collaborate per se, but you chauffeur and you bodyguard them when they come in. So that would be a great thing to talk about, as well as, um, the use of, oh, sorry. It's very hot in here. Um, racial profiling, racial profiling pieces, especially in the case of driving without license, petty, petty misdemeanors that often lead to deportation of individuals, a big problem in New Brunswick. So, I just need to say that, that's fine. Thank you.
I have Matt from Ward Five. Um, I have a question about forty-six. So Charlie asked about this a little bit. So this is an environmental consulting firm, am I correct? Forty-six, yeah. Page time.
You said...
It's an environmental consulting firm, so they...
Rich, can you speak to that?
Name of the company, environmental maintenance company. It was apparently a road opening permit. I don't think any environmental work was involved, but I might refer to the...
I just honestly Googled them, and I, that's what came up, so I could be wrong, I'm just curious.
Okay. This is a road opening permit.
Right.
These are performance law. So this company presumably opened the road, they posted the bond, they completed the work, the engineer satisfied, authorized the release of the, of the bond, which is ninety-seven, eighty-six, so...
All right, good. That's fine. Okay, fifty-one. The next page. So there's several different types of membrane infiltration systems. Do you know which one specifically it is? Just so I get a, like, the specifications and what have you?
We're not gonna go into too much detail on this. This is in reference to a bill being made. At the last meeting, as you recall, we renewed our contract with Evoca. This is money that was underestimated on what we thought the quote was gonna be for the bill, so this is just to pay off, fill in with the final fee.
How about, you can't give me the actual name of the, the specific type of membrane system it is? There's only like five on there, but...
No.
Okay, no? All right, that's weird. Thanks.
Anybody else on the resolution?
Council Vice President Anderson. Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Lovick.
Yes.
Council President Klemm.
Stay on sixteen, yes. Okay, we're gonna move to the public portion. We're gonna remind you, please state your name and address for the record, and remind you that we have five minutes. Uh, Kim, one second. We're just gonna go real quick to, we did, we have a minute. I asked for discussion first.
Mr. Karen is here.
Mr. Karen.
Council President for a brief presentation of the Orange Parking Board...
Move right by me. Good evening, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss the new residential digital parking permit program. It's a mouthful. One of the challenges we had, Parking Authority, and also for the residents, is that every year, as you're probably all familiar with, it's trying to renew the parking permit. And we literally get thousands of people coming to Parking Authority offices, waiting in line for a good half an hour, a cliff, gets hot, rumbling, and I figured, there's gotta be a better way to this. So I think I've found a better way. It's called digital parking, permit parking, parking, sorry. So since October, we've implemented out of Jersey Avenue parking right, so the communities actually go online through our website and apply for a commuter parking permit. It's been very successful, and I thought it'd be possible to apply that to the residential parking program as well. So we put out bids for a outfit to pretty much run the program for us like a third party, and we came across with a company called Payloc. They met our requirements, and one of the requirements I was looking for is to have a twenty-four-hour, seven-day-a-week customer service center that could take phone calls from residents at any time of day. You know, if you have nothing to do on a Saturday night, you wanna get a resident parking permit, you could do it at two o'clock in the morning or whatever. So they met that requirement, we chose them, they also had good products. So basically, the actual parking, resident parking program stays the same as far as the requirements needed to get a permit. You still need proof of residency, you still need your driver's license, you still need a vehicle registration. All right? The big difference is, we are no longer gonna be handing out decals or hang tags, if you will. Those go away. Instead, your license plate is your permit. So you could say it's eco-friendly as well, because you're saving on paper, and you don't have to straighten up the decal every year off your car. And, you know, ultimately, there are times when people put it in the wrong spot, they get ticketed erroneously because they didn't put the decal in the proper location. So that should take care of that. The other thing is, which I brought up before, is convenience. You could go online through our website, any time of the day, any day of the week, and apply for a parking permit. And basically, what you need to do is, you, if you want, you take a picture of your lease, your D, your driver's license, your vehicle registration, and you download it to the website, and then those credentials are checked, and once it meets the requirements, you get your permit approved, and therefore you can park right on the, in a residential parking area on street. So really, it should speed up the process. You know, we have a lot of college students who are computer savvy. I think they'll find this easy to use. The website actually has like a step-by-step demonstration, so it shows you what you need to do for...
One second. So just to get back, describing people, so when you say download your, your proof, if you don't have a scanner or you can't download something, you can supply it to the people through mail, right?
Well, you can mail it or fax.
Fax.
And then let me, I'll explain, I'll get to it also.
Yeah, some people can have the computer.
Right, and I'll get to that also. Excuse me. Yeah, I'll jump right to it. For those who aren't computer savvy, if you will, the Parking Authority office is still open. You could bring your stuff down like you always did, and we'll be more than happy to set you up through the website. So we're handling that, that group of people as well, so nothing changes there. But I think it helps reduce the need for people to come to the Parking Authority and, you know, be there by eight o'clock and, you know, brush alerts so they're there by four thirty, five o'clock. It reduces that, that need, and it helps, you know, basically get a residential permit to parking at your own time. As, one of the big questions, because we put out a mail-out explaining to the residents that this program is going to start up. It goes into effect June first, because we could start signing people up May first, or sign up the permit May first. One of the big questions we get is how visitor permits, how they handle that. Because in the past, you give it a hang tag, and you could give it to the visitor, but this is your car, and you'll be able to park on the street. In lieu of a hang tag, you'll be able to go into the website, and you put your visitor's license plate in. If you want that visitor to be there for one day, you can do it for one day, you can do it up to one year if you're a visitor. You know, that's your, that's your prerogative. So, sure.
Will the hang tags still be available, say, if people don't have computers and they can't do that for visitors?
Well, all you have to do is call. There's a toll-free number, I didn't mention that, there's a toll-free number, and all you have to do is call this toll-free number, that's manned, every day, week, any time of day, and pass that information on to them, and they'll, they'll take care of it. That's pretty much over, I don't know if I missed anything.
So, just to get back to what you said about the visitor thing, so, so all of a sudden you realize at twelve o'clock on Saturday that you're gonna have a company at three o'clock later on that day, the person makes a call to the twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five day place and says, "I'm gonna have a, a white Dodge here with license plate number, blah, 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 and it's gonna be here for whatever." And then you're, then that person's covered, the casing for...
You're ready to rock and roll.
Yeah.
It's not a problem. As far as enforcement goes, obviously, we're gonna be using LPR technology, which are the cameras on the vehicle. They go down the street, they read the camera, they read the license plate. If the license plate is not in the database, then obviously, there's a susceptible game to some extent.
Camera, they read the license plate, doesn't anything come up with the ward it belongs in?
Yeah, well, the ward, yeah, the, the...
So you can't use the sixth ward?
Right, you can't use your license plate in fifth ward if you belong in sixth ward. That's still, that's still part of the program. Yes. You know, we're, we're very excited about the program. I think it's, it's gonna be beneficial to the residents. And like I said, we've already implemented out of Jersey Avenue, it's been very successful. We got a lot of positive feedback from users, and, you know, looking forward to getting people to sign on May first and get this thing going. So I'll take any more questions if you have.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. All right, now if we move to the public portion, public portion, please remind her to give her name and address for the record. Remind her that you have five minutes. Thank you.
Buenoche, mi nombre es Julia Cruz.
Good evening, my name is Julia Cruz.
Vivo en la dos cero siete tauzen. Le doy las gracias por...
At two oh seven Townsend.
Le doy las gracias por apoyar a la comunidad.
Like to thank you very much for supporting the community.
Sobre la casa abandonada.
Relating to the abandoned properties. That's it. Thank you. Thank you.
Buenoche.
Good evening.
Soy Angelica Martinez.
Angelica Martinez is my name.
Pero el bienestar de la comunidad es nuestro.
And a member of Community Square Community.
Les damos las gracias por el apoyo de la comunidad.
Thank you so much for supporting the community.
Sobre la ley a las propiedades abandonadas.
Relating to the abandoned properties law.
Para el bienestar de nuestra comunidad.
For the well-being of our community.
Que perjudican más sería como a la... Son peligrosos también para nosotros porque a veces la gente...
Abandoned properties are a danger for, for us, because sometimes...
Entra a vivir ahí.
People that are living there...
Fuman y a veces se les provocan los incendios.
And maybe they're smoking or otherwise causing the fires.
Yo se siente incendio.
And one doesn't feel safe around them.
Gracias.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Step up to the microphone.
Danielle Moore, one eighty-eight, Marprish. First, I, I would like to thank the city for speaking up to the Board of Education about me doing a sidewalk on the Princeton School property, due to where it was in very poor condition due to our child was injured there. Uh, thank you for speaking to the board. Also, I say it's time to the board to speak up to the city. It's been over two years that I mentioned this to the city, and I've showed evidence on this, this is with Baldwin and Railroad Avenue, due to where that's a one-way street, and when you repaired the pavement for that street, you took, you removed the guardrail down, and now you have over fifty cars a day cutting through the parking lot there, going through that one, through the parking lot where the laundry mat is, and the restaurant.
Is that pri- okay, so the city took it down, or is that private?
No, no, that, that was the city where they took it down, due to where they replaced the, the road, the road there. Like I said, it's been about two years now, one reason why I'm saying, wow, if you was to put a cop car to sit there, how many tickets you would give out, and I mean, it's getting very dangerously, wow, you'd give you a heart attack if you're there. Wow, you have school buses coming from the adult learning center, exiting through there, and the people are cutting through there, due to where they don't have to go through Handy Street to wait in line. And wow, I tell you, wow, you had, it was a really close call, car coming through the par- parking lot to cut through there, and has a car coming from Baldwin Street, wow, I mean, it was really a close call, so like I said, it's been two ye- over two years. Every time I mention it to you, you say that you're gonna, uh, look into, uh, approving to fix it, God forbid, when, uh, when are you gonna do it, God forbid somebody doesn't really get hurt. Like I said, you have school buses that exit through there, so like I said, once again, I hope you do take action, so no one does atta- get hurt.
Yes.
And like I said, I know you say yes, but you, but you've been saying, yeah, 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 yes, for what, over two years now?
I will ask the engineering department to look at it. Are, are people going the one-way on railroad?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so it's a, it's a police enforcement issue, as much as anything?
It's not Ro- Railroad Avenue, the, the one-way is Railroad Avenue, but due to where you have the parking lot where the restaurant and the laundry is, they're going through the parking lot to cut through the one-way street.
Okay.
Like I said, that's because you took away the guardrail, where that was the block there, where it was over there, there before.
To look at, at whether putting the guardrail back up was the right thing to do.
Well, like I said, believe me, what if you put, I guarantee you, what if you put a police car there, what, in the evening time, what, you'd get at least fifty cars cutting through there. Like I said, I showed you, I showed you proof with the pictures. So, like I said, I hope you do look into that soon as possible.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Miller to, to try.
Okay, thank you. Uh, then getting back to, uh, the schools on Lee Avenue, uh, for Red Shaw and Miliston Avenue, that's where it was approved back in November, uh, two thousand fifteen, about the lighting system for, for, uh, between, uh, Lee and Delavan, Lee and Comstock, Ward and Remston, and, uh, uh, Handy and Remston. It was approved back in two thousand fifteen, will you please tell me, uh, what, what is gonna be done, what is gonna be done?
Is it the lighting on Lee Streets that she did?
Yes, we press the button and how it's supposed to light, light up, uh, to let the kids or kids go by.
I believe at the last meeting, Tom Valenti said they were rethinking the in-ground lighting program altogether, but maybe Mr. Moody can speak to that.
Yes, we are looking at that in-ground lighting program, it does not appear to be as effective as it was, uh, made out to be when it was originally envisioned. And, uh, I do not know exactly the status, uh, Tom is on vacation for a couple weeks right now. Um, if I put a call into him, I'll find out where he left that and pick it up while he's on vacation. But, uh, there is nothing that I can present to you to see.
Well, I, I, I have to say, believe me, uh, I'm not sure the right way to say this about Mr. Tom, due to where, what, I noticed a couple of meetings where, every time I was ready to speak, where he would leave out the door, and then I know, uh, back in July, when we had the big traffic meeting, how, okay, yes, uh, where it was approved to do the crosswalks, the lines and everything, and then when I mentioned to him about something, "Oh, we just did this, we just paid this for there," wow, it's not about, okay, you just paid for this, it's about, it, it's, and it has to be done. I remind you what, I'm beginning to, uh, Lee, Lee Avenue, I remind you what, how many accidents you have, you have in the area, I remind you the record is, three with, uh, Lee and Lawrence, three with Ward and Lawrence, and one with Ellen and Lee. So, so like I said, yes, due to where I'm, I, like I said, don't like that Mr. Tom is really, I can't really say the right word, but where, how he's busy calculating, uh, what is being done, no, it's for the safety of our people.
But with the, uh, your request to, uh, provide information on the accidents in the area, the accidents we have looked into, and, but the accidents are operator error. They are not the fact that, uh, caution signs or stop signs are not in place, they are operator error, not paying attention, uh, driving in excessive speed, it's a police enforcement issue, more than it is an engineering issue.
Well, okay, like I said, getting back to Mr. Tom again, due to where, what, it was, it was approved, that was back in, uh, July, due to where the, uh, the orange sticks, they were supposed to be put down on the corner of Lee and Ward Street, due to where that was a blind zone, uh, he kept saying that, okay, that, uh, back then, uh, that, okay, we're waiting for another order, each time we're waiting for another order, that's been over seven months now.
I can update you on the order. Uh, I've been in touch with Garden State Highway Products for the last couple days. The order that was put in about eight, eight months ago has not been fulfilled, I'm trying to get that fulfilled. I'm on the phone with them daily at this point, trying to find out what the problem is.
Okay, then my, that last one, that, uh, that is, uh, can you tell me if it's been approved for, on the corner of Lee and, uh, Lawrence, to be approved for the, the curving to make it passable for a person in a wheelchair?
Lee and Lawrence, has it been?
That was where we spoke, spoke, we were waiting for it to be approved, it, it, where the city said they were going to approve it.
I cannot give you an update on that. We have a program that will be going out next year for construction, that is one of the items that is in the program, uh, but a design has not been done for that, uh, area at this point.
Which I gotta update it.
Well, like I said, that's what, that's what he said about, like I said, it's been over four months ago, due to where, like I said, it's a shame of, of a young man, he has to be, his mother has to push him in a wheelchair on the, in the street, due to where the, uh, the sidewalks, the curbs are not passable for wheelchair.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, uh, Greg Garcia, New Jersey Working Families, thirty-one street, New Jersey. Um, I just, uh, wanted to, uh, thank the Council and the city again for their continued consideration of recommendations around, uh, decking immigrants in, uh, New Brunswick. Had the chance to submit, uh, a police, uh, policy to a number of advocacy groups, including the ACLU and the Alliance for Human Justice, to give that, some feedback on, uh, on the police, uh, policy that was submitted, uh, two council meetings ago. And so I just wanted to read through a couple of, uh, suggestions, uh, that hopefully the, the city will consider. So, bear with me one second. So, I have four key points I want to go through. Where the policy refers to ICE detainers, uh, two-four-seven, it should also refer to other forms of warrantless ICE requests, like, uh, two-four-seven-D, two-four-seven-N, I-two-four-seven-X, or I-I-Ice CBP, USCIS, administrative warrants, uh, the police should not honor any of these requests unless supported by a judicial warrant, uh, otherwise, the city, uh, can open itself to liability for aiding enforcement actions without probable cause. Um, I, I know that, uh, a lot of the policy, uh, came from a model that, uh, has been implemented quite well in, uh, in Princeton, um, and, you know, I think they're doing a commendable job in Princeton, really. I've had recent conversations with the mayor, and there, they've actually clarified that they will not be honoring, uh, across court, any administrative warrants, um, so I think, uh, clarification along these lines, which I think is what you folks are trying to get at, would be important, we compare that administrative warrants are not sufficient, and they should be, uh, accompanied with judicial warrants, you know, due process and probable cause are, you know, I think important things that, you know, we should hold as a standard for society and should, uh, you know, protect immigrant members of our community as well as, uh, you know, everybody else. Also, uh, we recommend that the city should not aid in any ICE operations, even just as tactical support. This section, this, I'm referring to, uh, section E-one, uh, this section is troubling and will greatly diminish the community's trust in police. The city has limited resources and should by no means use the resources to support federal enforcement actions. Helping ICE, uh, actions with tactical or safety support is helping the enforcement of federal immigration law by facilitating ICE raids, uh, it will cause irreparable harm to the community. I, I know we have, you know, recently had ICE action again, uh, in the city, and, you know, I just wanna drive home the point that, you know, our feeling is that helping them, uh, conduct these raids, does not instill trust within the community, when folks see ICE come in, if they see New Brunswick police anywhere near them, they suspect collaboration in a certain sense, you are collaborating.
Uh, my understanding, the rest of my knowledge, we do not assist in raids, what the, because it is, my understanding that a police department, if you're to transfer, would only come out if needed for public safety, if the public is in harm ways. Other than that, that's my understanding, again, and mine, uh, Captain Miller, you might correct, or there's, um, that's that, we have been very clear with that. So, we do not do it, and, and tactical sounds more like we involve, we shall for safety reasons, just to maintain the community and the business surrounding whatever operation is going on, if needed.
I'm trying to like pull up a word that says it in the, uh, policy. Our, our sentiment is, the, the federal government has the resources to, to carry out raids, they, they have no problem with it in Afghanistan. So, they, they can do it themselves without the support of, uh, the local police force.
Again, the police is not carrying out the raids, is not assisting in raids.
I understand, but they might say, block off the streets, or...
If somebody are dangerous, that might not be opportunity to go on, to go into the community, they, they might involve in that. So, they are not, let's be careful how we phrase this, they are not conducting raids.
No, to be, I'm not suggesting that you're conducting raids, but you're facilitating the raids by having a police presence in the area, and, I mean, I've, I've seen this honestly in, you know, a lot of, uh, Facebook conversations, where, you know, there's a post about, you know, an ICE raid that, uh, would have occurred, and people get frightened, they think, you know, oh, New Brunswick, uh, police are collaborating with them, and this is a lot of misinformation that goes to the community. And the more that, uh, you know, the police stay away from those actions and let the federal government do what unfortunately they're going to do, um, I think it, it helps build trust, and, you know, I, I think it's an important and an issue to consider.
Can you also help to get that out to the people?
Yeah, I mean, just, listen, there's, there's all, you know, several great groups, uh, in town that do a lot of work around, lots of, uh, New Labor, also Unity Square, and, uh...
This is where it's been, uh, there's over twenty-five organizations all together working on that.
And, uh, um, there, there's great organizations in town, there, there's no question about it, they can work on this, so, um, I'm happy to, to do my part to, to get the message out, I know a lot of folks here tonight are also willing to do it, uh, their part, um, and, you know, I think it's just a, a whole community collaboration, but, a lot of that trust can be blown up instantaneously by seeing New Brunswick police near, uh, an ICE raid that's being conducted, so, I mean, I, I think that's an important reason to consider.
Can I assume also that you've given these four things that you're talking about, special build numbers and things like that, to the mayor, or somebody else?
Absolutely, and I'm submitting this to you, outside a bunch of copies, so, um, I'm happy to submit it to the mayor's office, um, and I, I can hand you guys a copy tonight. Also, uh, policy does not include, uh, privacy protections for requests of sensitive information, uh, by ICE, uh, federal government does not include, uh, protections again, about asking, not asking for immigration status. The immigrant justice lines, when they first submitted a letter, the city had some great recommendations around this, um, it's just, you know, once you gather information on immigrant members of the community, you're required by the federal law to give it to them, so the best thing is, don't collect that information, you won't be, you know, required to give it away.
Thank you. So, five minutes.
Do you wanna hear my last short?
Yeah, we got one more.
I'll be quick, I, I promise, sorry. Just, this one's a quick one. Your visas, I know you guys have already been on news visas, but having a written policy that, you know, is posting people know where to go, uh, would be a great thing to see. So, I'll, I'll add these, and also add the one quick point, uh, really consider adding temporary agencies to your licensing, uh, legislation here in New, in, in New Brunswick, so they can be covered by the wage theft ordinance as well, I've mentioned this before, but I think it's a great policy, obviously, you have a lot of problems with temp agencies here in town, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, and...
Thank you.
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradaville, I, uh, no, I usually focus on local, super-local sometimes issues, but, uh, I think that there is, uh, bigger issues that we need to address, uh, and that's why I'm gonna ask you only one question tonight, I'd like each member of the council to answer it. Who should be impeached? Christie, Trump, both, or neither?
It's a fun one.
I'm saying Christie.
Christie, Trump, both, or neither?
Both.
All right?
Yeah.
Counselman Egan?
I have no response to that.
It's like a...
I'm talking outside, man.
Okay. Counselman?
You can talk.
No comment? Counselman Socorro-Luffey?
I don't think neither are working the most to be impeached yet, and that doesn't mean that I agree with what we're doing, but as far as the impeachment process, I mean, neither have we, I don't think.
Uh, let me explain to you some reasons why I think that we have a crisis here, and this needs to be addressed by every body of government. The person who's the president is a liar, a fraud, and a predator. There's, uh, a former Labor Secretary, Robert Reich, who just put out a video outlining, uh, what he says are four good reasons to impeach the, uh, president, including his, uh, crazy accusations about the former president, his violation of the constitutional emoluments clause with his DC hotel, his quid pro quo with China, his outrageous, uh, travel ban against Muslim countries, and his repeated attacks on democracy and freedom of the press. A fifth reason that hasn't quite been proven yet, but, day by day, it seems more and more likely, that the president is actually committing treason, which is defined as adhering to our enemies and giving them aid and comfort. He's also brought with him a clown car full of terrible, dangerous people, and put them in positions of power, like Michael Flynn, uh, Jeff Sessions, Betsy DeVos, Rex Tillerson, Scott Pruitt, Ben Carson, and a guy named Bill Stepien, which brings me to my next list of reasons. These are reasons why we should impeach a governor, Chris Christie. Not only is he a admitted liar who was sued for defamation, represented Bernie Madoff, helped his criminal brother escape prosecution, steered huge contracts to John Ashcroft's company, he was the guy who wanted to cover up the, uh, statues of, of women in his job, and, uh, he, also, Christie abused his office to grandstand and locked up innocent people, uh, threw the book at, uh, poor people and Muslims, and, uh, let real criminals, like the former New Brunswick mayor, John Lynch, go free after short sentences, and, uh, allowed them to basically take the fall for all of their associates in the criminal network, and, uh, and we saw how that worked out, uh, here in Middlesex County. He also violated ethics rules by not disclosing a loan that he made, he broke rules by spending big money on himself, on travel expenses and hotels, and that's all stuff from before he was the governor. Then he became the governor, and here we are, eleven credit downgrades later, he, uh, handed over the pensions to his Wall Street buddies and blamed people like teachers for the problems with it, he cozied up to corrupt people like Norcross and Gilmore and the other bosses, he, uh, basically, uh, empowered corrupt criminals with deep ties to Middlesex County and the disgraced McGreevy administration, he wasted the Sandy money that he fought for by giving it to, again, his friends and buddies and developers, he abused his power to, uh, basically, uh, allow his friends to get away with crimes like he did in Hunterdon County, and according to a federal judge, he created a culture of vindictiveness that basically said, "You're with us or you're against it, uh, against us," and he, actually, his mentor and friend is now a convicted felon, David Sampson, uh, he pleaded guilty to extorting an airline in connection with a very powerful role as chairman of the Port Authority, and we saw what else happened at the Port Authority. The Port Authority advocated its responsibility to provide proper transportation for people in this area, NJ Transit was allowed to... NJ Transit was allowed to fall into disrepair, and we see that right now the trains are not running like they're supposed to because of that problem that Chris Christie caused. But he also turned the Port Authority and his own office into an absolutely disgusting and corrupt abuse of power machine, where his office regularly bribed powerful people by giving them access or things of value, including even wreckage from the Twin Towers. He gave that stuff out to try to curry favor and get political support. He also, as we know, punished his enemies with sheer vindictiveness as he did, somebody could have been killed with what they did at the George Washington Bridge. People like to make jokes about it and make light of it because it's a crazy, insane New Jersey thing, but it was outrageous what was done to take one of the most expensive assets of the Port Authority and use it as a weapon against people in a town over a petty political fight. This man needs to be impeached, our constitution allows for it. I call on you, please pass a resolution, calling on our assembly people to impeach the governor and call on our congressmen to impeach the president. Thank you.
Good evening, as I mentioned before, my name is Eric Miller, I'm a reporter and we're fine. I want to thank the council for sitting in listening to us today, and also I hope that you take the resolutions that, and the amendments to the police directive that Craig submitted seriously and really to heart. That being said, I want to touch for a moment on something that's really worried me, especially since November, you know, we're living in very politically unstable times, there's a lot of misinformation floating around, and there's a lot of fear in a lot of people's hearts and minds, and I'm very concerned about the amount of radio silence that comes from the council, from, and from our mayor, in terms of not only concerns on municipal actions and potential ICE action, or the lack of declaration of a sanctuary city to show solidarity with the other brave municipalities in our state who have decided to fight a corrupt and vindictive and dangerous president, but also, excuse me, I just, I really would just like to echo the sentiments that Craig had for the resolution changes, as well as, again, ask the council and by proxy the mayor to make an official declaration of sanctuary as a show of solidarity, as well as echo Mr. Cradaville's sentiments that it is important no longer can municipal politicians just deal with local, you know, local matters. It is now, now more than ever important for our elected officials and our municipal appointees to really make a stand and send a message not only up the chain of command, but down to municipal residents that they care, that they are worried and engaged in the larger political atmosphere. And I think it's really great that we have this public address session where people in the town can come up and voice these concerns and call upon the council and by proxy, call upon the mayor, because I've made inquiries and other organizations involved in the fight for sanctuary campaign have made inquiries to speak with the mayor, and that's fallen upon deaf ears. And so this is really our only form of recourse, and I would invite anybody else who hasn't spoken tonight, who echoes any of the sentiments from activists and other concerned residents that have been brought up tonight, to come up and echo that. Even if you don't feel like you have anything more to add to the conversation, just add your voice, because it's really important, more than ever now, for us to engage in a dialogue, and it's important for us to all know where we stand politically, and I would just, sorry I'm rambling, but in summation, I would just like to echo support not only for Craig's amendments and police directive, but as well as echo support for Mr. Cradaville's call for a resolution, giving a stance from the city of New Brunswick to what the values, what values we stand for, and I would invite anybody else sitting in the audience tonight who wants to come up and agrees with these sentiments to come up and let that be known. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brian Lee, I'm from down the road in Franklin Township. I was at the big city council meeting a few weeks ago, where you had it across the street because it was so huge, and I'm very, very happy to see that you guys are moving forward with ordinances and a written policy to protect immigrants, at least, you know, help protect them, I should say, against some potential interference from ICE. And it is very encouraging, and I would also like to report that my township of Franklin is also moving forward on that, so maybe you guys can have a race to see who gets there first. And I would just like to echo what, what's his name again?
Eric.
What Eric said. I mean, I've been to rallies all across New Jersey, I've been to one in Jersey City where Mayor Philip, you know, spoke out very forcefully in, about protecting immigrants as much as they possibly can against the Trump administration. I've been to Trenton where the mayor and a whole bunch of people from the city council also spoke out in protection of immigrants, and it's very inspiring. I know that, you know, the local politicians have only so much power, but hearing them speak out in public is really a powerful sign for anybody who happens to be attending, and they can tell their family and friends, and it just makes, you know, the lives of people in the city a little easier. And also in regards to the police ordinance, I would like to add that it doesn't just protect undocumented immigrants, it also protects American citizens, because recently, just last week, a U.S. citizen named Ronnie Chavez Awilah has sued ICE because Kentucky police detained him after ICE requested it, and then he was held in an ICE detention center for three weeks. But guess what? He's a U.S. citizen. He kept telling them that he's a U.S. citizen, they didn't believe him, they refused to let him talk to a lawyer, they refused to let him see a judge, and now he's suing ICE and he could potentially sue the Kentucky police that held him. And I mean, if that happens here, God forbid, someone could sue the city and that would, you know, that would be a liability that the city probably doesn't want to deal with. So having a written policy and also having a system in place to educate the police to make sure that they carry out the policy would help protect the city, would help protect not just undocumented immigrants, but protect U.S. citizens that, that apparently, you know, don't look like citizens to ICE for some reason. And the other thing I would like to add is that, I think it was last week, our Attorney General Jeff Sessions, you know, threatened once again that they would claw back funding from cities over not working with ICE. And I'm sure that your lawyer here has probably told you more on that, but I would just like to add that the reason why Jeff Sessions had to say claw back is because they are not sure they can get this money back, because A, they don't control the funding, and B, under the Supreme Court's very unhelpful ruling back then on Obamacare, that the federal government cannot withhold funding to force local, local municipalities to pass policy. This was regards to Medicaid expansion, but very often in this case, it applies to all the cities and their, and their police funding. They cannot, you know, threaten to withhold that to force you guys to work with ICE. So, I mean, it's very unlikely that would hold up in court. So that's, I mean, it may worry you guys, but that's something I think that not just this city, but many other places will fight and win, so. And the other aspect of that is the more cities join in on this, I mean, on this sanctuary or some cities call it fair and welcoming policies, the harder it is for the Trump administration to go after all of them, and the easier it is for the next city to do it and the next place to do it. So, once again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi there, Bill Chambers, board two again. I'm going to try and keep it short because I'm not feeling super well today. I would like to reiterate Brian's point about these sort of threats against sanctuary cities, and I really urge the council to not heed them and to, if there's something that you value, to stand by those values, because it's highly unlikely that funding will actually be retracted. And it, there certainly is a snowball effect, and we kind of are able to create an alliance of cities. Every single major city in the United States is a sanctuary city, and I think that as a leader, as a leading city in the state of New Jersey, it would be prudent for the reputation of New Brunswick to follow in those footsteps. So along those lines, I would like to ask those of you on the council, and I would like to hear from all of you if possible, what are your qualms with advocating for the name Sanctuary City for New Brunswick?
I think that the term is the new term that has been used, that term doesn't change anything. We already have policies in place that we are compared to every other city, that we are welcoming our first city, we welcome everybody. So the term is just that everybody's putting out that, oh, sanctuary city. I don't think it's needed when we have policies in place that we are protecting our citizens, including those undocumented. If I felt that there was a need because they were not being protected, or there was some type of situation that sanctuary would help, believe me, I'm gonna go first one, but I am not there yet. I don't think that sanctuary, the Talley, or to me sometimes by Giger, are people who are out there, not like some of us who are able to be here with, you know, that are American citizens, but those who really are affected by these policies. When you put that term out there, sanctuary, sometimes that's detrimental to the community because that's, you are making, you are identifying the city, you are saying, okay, let's come over there. So that, it has happened in some of the places, and if you look at where ICE has been very targeting communities, and if you look at it, the majority of those are sanctuary cities who are declared as sanctuary cities.
Well, like I said, sanctuary cities also are every single major city in the United States, and the major cities are more likely to carry larger populations of undocumented citizens, so it's extremely misleading to apply that that's the reason why ICE is targeting them, or the fact is that ICE is targeting them because they have more undocumented immigrants. And I would like to...
It's my opinion on it, and you asked for my opinion, so that's...
That's not an opinion of this, directly misleading facts. And the fact, and the truth is that if you are, if you are neutral on the subject, if you don't really think that it's needed, I mean, we are here every single week, this is month two, we've been here for two months, asking for this thing, and with a stroke of panic, it happened, and it seems very simple, so it seems more not that you don't care, but that you're absolutely opposed to it. At least that is the message that we're receiving. I understand that that may not be true, but I'm speaking, I'm speaking on behalf of the people who are coming to these meetings, and it seems like it would be a very simple gesture on your part, yet we seem to be fighting very hard for this thing that, again, you are claiming to care about, but are not just doing. If it really is just a word to you and it doesn't mean anything, then why not do it if it matters to so many people?
But you say, that's misleading when you say that we don't care, we, that we're opposed to it. You represent, you said that you represent a certain amount of people, we also represent the thousands of people that's in the city that don't come to the meetings, and I don't even say they're opposed to it, but everybody has a different opinion, we have a different opinion. And right now, sanctuary city, I mean, it's become, the word has been kicked around for a long time, but there's a speed issue because of the last election. A lot of people still don't know what ramifications, what comes under that umbrella, you know, because we're concerned about, like I said, whenever, it's just like I tell people all the time when I'm speaking for the, what is it? People will say immigrants, and automatically will think, okay, the large Latino population, but you have different cities where you have, we go to Irvington, we talk about immigrants, well, we talk about Haitian population. You go other places, we're talking about different populations. We don't know yet, we don't know what the ramifications are, or we don't even know what that umbrella means. But if you have the policies in place, you know, if you have the policies in place, then we do, we see, okay, you say, okay, it's easy just with a stroke of a pen, but we still have to work things out. We have a responsibility to everybody in the city, and not just one, not just one group, one particular group, we have a responsibility to everybody in the city.
I, yeah, we didn't say anything, no one's saying anything about Latino specifically, we're just talking about the undocumented. I know that that's the focus because that's a big portion of our population, but I, I need to, I need to move on because I'm running out of time. Two months ago, which is February 7th, when we first came in, we talked about the idea of a municipal ID program, which has been in the works for a couple of years, and you gave a short timeline, obviously very rough, and completely impossible to actually estimate, but you gave a rough estimate that in a few months it would be kickstarted, and it's been two months, which would suggest that reasonable progress has been made in that, on that front. Can you give us any updates on that?
Further on down the road, I don't think you have any exact data, but it's coming along very nicely.
And if you would like to see the input of the community, I would suggest that you talk to members of, because you were saying that we are not involved, but we are very involved. So you might want to talk to the residents who are members of the Unity Square.
Yeah, I've been to, I went to the Unity Square, it's a, we were...
And Esperanza Project, which has, those are very residents here that are affected by this situation, and they're working very hard to make this happen, so I suggest you talk to the residents and inform them what has been done, and then before we assume, or everybody assumes that we're not doing anything.
No, I understand, I understand that resident committee has informed and that these things are being adjusted, but this is also for the purpose of posterity here. Can you tell us what you guys are doing as a council to further this?
I guess I'm from, I was part of the, from the network, from this movement.
I understand, but since February 7th?
We have been working, you know, as you said, you were mentioning with these new laws and things that you have to be careful with what, how you're going to manage the documents, if we're going to keep them, if we're not going to keep them, we have to make sure it's in the budget, we have to make sure we have the resources available. So, like I said, with Jason, I talk to Jason Rowe almost every time, with Charles Ferman, with the residents, so it's moving along, it's moving along. We just want to make sure that it's right, especially doing even more so now with the climate. We're not just going to put a municipal ID program just to make sure, okay, because we said we're going to have, we're going to make sure that it's the best one, and it's one that is going to work for the city, as well as the residents of the city.
Yeah, I understand it takes time, and it's something important that needs to be done right, and I totally understand that, I just wanted to know what progress has been made. You've mentioned the budget, has it been budgeted for in the 2017 budget?
I'll just grab all that if you was on that.
There's not a specific line item, but I'm convinced the expenses of the program will be covered.
But you, it's, we're just going to, there's not, has not been specifically talked about? That seems like an important thing.
I said it, I said it, I said it was a specific line item, but I said the expenses of the program I'm sure will be covered with 2017 money or capital money, depending on what the, what the program requires.
Okay. So I would just like to reiterate the importance that using the word sanctuary, and if you were looking for a specific, you're talking about umbrella, a specific iteration of what that would entail, Alliance for Immigrant Justice laid out for you guys a very detailed idea of what that would look like for specifically the community of New Brunswick. So I would suggest that you go back and take a look at that, and it would make the process a lot more simple, especially as you guys say, these policies are already being done, and all we have to do is give them a title, then that would certainly get us off of your backs and get, make the community a lot, feel a lot safer here in New Brunswick. I only have like 30 seconds left, but was New Brunswick aware of the incoming ICE raids that occurred on Thursday morning?
I, I am aware.
No, was the city aware before they happened?
Oh, the city, as far as Sunday, I received a call, I called the New Brunswick Police Department, the captain, and the police department was not aware that they would give it.
Okay, did they, were they involved in the process after the ICE detainer? Were they brought to a New Brunswick facility? Did they, was there some, no?
No.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Carla Ramirez, reporter with New Brunswick Today. I'm glad that the police department is doing a crackdown this month for distracted drivers. Just this morning, a male driver on his cell phone with a reflective vest, I don't know who, what type of worker he was, put his cell phone and ran over the red license stop sign for my Skovas, which was actively loading a passenger. He literally stopped, I took pictures of his license plate and also had a description of how the ride looks, but I'm not going to be sitting three hours at the police department so they can tell me they can't do, and they can't really do anything about it, because I'm tired of always going there in ports, showing them footage, just so they could tell me that they really can't do much, only that they'll send a notification now. And it's honestly upsetting, because as I told President Funtz before, that if there's anything the city can do to improve the safety of the runway vehicles on railroad, and also illegal parking in front of fire hydrants, which you told me to wait for you last time after the meeting, and then later you told me to email you.
Yes, I said it, and I told you, you emailed me. No, no, I told you to email me, and you specifically wanted to dictate the terms how I got back to you. And I think, excuse me?
I emailed you.
I know, you emailed me. And I bumped it up. I put it up to make sure it went through Mr. Longland. And I sent it through engineering. We talked about that. We discussed that two weeks ago. Matter of fact, it was before the last meeting. It was before the last meeting. And I don't know if we have a...
I don't recall discussing it at the last meeting, but I did...
No, not at the meeting.
Oh, yes. They passed your email on to the engineering department to look at the signage at the location they're concerned about.
All right. Because honestly, there's only...
The issue of... I'm sorry. The issue of the hydrant, if someone was parking at the hydrant illegally, I think that's a police enforcement issue.
Yes, I call them all the time, and they usually respond like one or two hours later. And one time, they responded the next day after the vehicle was already gone. And they told me to call when the police is there. And it's honestly stupid because I call, and the only reason they tell me is that to call them when they're already there. But when the police arrive, the vehicle's already gone. And they tell me they can't file a citation or sending a notice because they don't have the vehicle license plates, even though I provided to them, even with security footage from the property there. And there's also a marked vehicle, which it's a T-MO on it when the runway is there. Police doesn't do anything about it. I post all the videos onto social media, it's like in the city as well as the police department. But it appears that it's not even been done. I haven't seen any police out there with any undercover vehicles or any new signs being installed. I think that there should also be a speed bump installed there because now that the weather's getting great, kids are going to be playing there. And the last thing you want is one of those runway drivers are speeding to just to get out, run over kids who play there.
If you want to advocate for a speed bump, I suggest you make your presentation to the traffic commission. That's the way we handle them. And a petition of your neighbors who are in support of it. That's how we've established the procedure for approving them. So if you think a speed bump is required and it's a good idea, I'd recommend you present that to the traffic commission. And they will then, you know, hand up a recommendation to the city council.
All right. I also noticed that the fire departments are parking their vehicles, which some are not marked, on the yellow lanes that have a sign next to it that says, "No parking at all times." I contacted them about it, and they said, yes, they are fire officials' vehicles, but some of them with no mark. And if I were to look at the vehicles personally, I think that if the police officers saw those vehicles, they would not give them a ticket, even because it belongs to a city worker.
The fire department?
Yes, the fire department.
Or those fire lanes? Where are they?
I'm not sure what it is. The only thing is that there's a yellow line next to it on the sidewalk. And there's also a sign that says, "No parking at all times." If I was passing by, or if I owned a vehicle and were to park there, I would think I'm not allowed to. But apparently, there's a reserved parking for the fire department. I think that its sign should be switched into a reserved parking for the New Brunswick Fire Department.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. My name is John Doe. I'm from Fort Worth.
Really?
Yes. I just wanted to expand a little bit about what you were talking about, about how you don't know about applying the term of sanctuary city affects New Brunswick. I think a lot of cities are prepared of passing the solutions that would make them an effective sanctuary cities. But I also think that it's illegal for the government to threaten not to give them federal funds, for example, for schools or for, you know, whatever it is that they're doing. So I think that the city should, you know, look into that and see that it's... That the federal government doesn't have the right to do that, to take away the funds that they're... You know, threaten to take away the funds that they're giving us. So I think, you know, that's one point of like looking into using that term. And as some of the people here were saying, using that term will show the residents that you care and that... I know that you care, but I mean, it will really show that like, you know, that you're not supporting that. I think that'll benefit you in a lot of different ways. That's... Those are basically the only things I would say.
Thank you. One time.
I'm only coming up because to unpack your brother about...
I know, but we got one time.
Okay.
We have to take a order. Anybody else can have this order. See you done?
I just want to say something real quick. I think that also it's nice thinking about, you know, what is a sanctuary, the budget cuts and all that. I think that would also, as a community, as a council and as a government, we need to start looking at it whatever at all, not just for immigration. There's going to be cuts for childcare. There's going to be cuts for education. There's going to be cuts for all of that. And I think we need to be ready for it. And we need to start thinking along with the mayor and everybody else strategically on how we're going to react to those cuts that are coming. So I'm not just worried about the cuts for immigration. All across the board, and we need to make sure that we are... That we're going to be healthy and... That's what I wanted to say before.
Thank you. Anybody else see it done?
Could you turn it?
Taken.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Egan.